We'll open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jirogi Gi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land, and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And with that, we'll move on to a roll call.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Molton?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
And Councilmember Fernandez is joining via Zoom. Mayor Burgel?
Here.
Great.
You forgot me, Shannon.
My gosh.
Then I'm here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I'm here.
So sorry.
And did you hear Councilmember Fernandez checking? Okay, great. All right, well, who cared to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. And did we have a report out of closed session? City Attorney Black?
Yes, Mayor. The following action was taken in closed session on motion of Councilmember Molton, seconded by Councilmember Fernandez, to initiate a lawsuit against parties who are not being named in order to protect the city's interest prior to filing of the suit. That was the motion, and the vote was four yes. Members Molton, Fernandez, Bauer, and Castellano voting aye, and a member, Councilmember Contreras Deloche, voting no. The motion did carry, four to one.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to mayor announcements. The 2025 For the Community Golf fundraiser tournament with social services coordinator Parrish and social services supervisor Wood. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, council. Okay, thank you so much. All right, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for taking time for us to speak to you briefly this evening. My name is Ciara Wood, homeless services supervisor with the city's Community Access Project for Eureka and Uplift Eureka. And this is my coworker Sienna Parrish, our community outreach coordinator. And for those of you unfamiliar, the Community Access Project for Eureka is within the city's finance departments. We provide access to quality of life programs and opportunities for all members of the community, regardless of their living situation or income. And we are here specifically this evening to share information about our upcoming fundraiser, the Fifth Annual For the Community Golf Classic.
Let me bring that up. My name is Sienna Parrish, so the, our For the Community Golf Classic is held in partnership with the Betty Kwan Shin Homeless Foundation. And the event is being held this Saturday at the Eureka Municipal Golf Course with a shotgun start at 8:30 a.m. So I would like to thank Ramones for providing coffee for the event. Proceeds will be benefiting, will be split 50/50 between Cape and Betty Kwan Shin's foundation, and they will be benefiting our youth and quality of life programming, which includes events like our upcoming October costume drive and donation, which provides kids with families who may struggle to get a Halloween costume or find one that fits, particularly as they keep sprouting like weeds. It makes sure they have available options that are free and very cute, so we can all have fun during the holidays. Betty's efforts, all the money will be going to ensure that local community members who need housing will find shelter and also support them in their moves to get back into employment and into regular life. So, the cost is $500 per group of four, and there is a chance to win $1,500 if you get first place. Please call the pro shop at the Eureka Golf Course to sign up. Their number is on the screen, it's 707-443-4808. And then, for businesses who are interested in sponsoring our event, we have packages ranging from our bronze to platinum, and they can email me at s p a r r i s h at eureka.ca.gov if they are interested in supporting this.
All right, so I just want to give a shout out to our biggest sponsor who has supported us for all five years we've held this event, Mercer Fraser, as well as the other businesses that have continued to support us, and new businesses hearing about us for the first time. We're super appreciative of the community's support, as well as the council's support, continued support of our programming. All right, yeah, so we'd like to invite everyone out to have fun for a good cause. Currently, we've got six teams signed up, so that's a 50% chance of at least getting your money back with that first through third place prize. So sign up, you've got a good chance of winning, it's a fun cause, you get to learn more about our programs, you'll get lunch, goodie bags, there's prizes for closest to pin and longest drive, so we hope to see you all out there. Right, thank you so much. If you have any questions, we are happy to answer.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Wait, have we received Councilmember members, Councilmember Bauer's team enrollment yet?
Still waiting.
Okay, just checking.
I'll be driving around in a golf cart delivering drinks to everyone on the course, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then, if we could for a moment, I wanted to invite Brendan Riley to come up. We've lost a member of our team, David Lindberg, who was on the Board of Appeals Commission since 2008, which is an incredibly long time. Thank you for coming up, Brendan, if you could say a few words?
Yeah, thanks. So at the end of July, we lost a gem of a human being, David Lindberg. He was on the appeals board here in New York forever. He was, had a great sense of humor.
Oh, turn your microphone on.
Sorry. How about now?
Yeah.
Had a great sense of humor. He was just an irreplaceable member of our Board of Appeals. He was a geologist by trade, but he donated tons and tons of time to the community. He was all over the place doing all sorts of stuff. And on behalf of the city of Eureka, I just wanted to extend our gratitude to David for all of his years of service, and our deepest condolences to his family. And if I may, can I ask for a moment of silence for David?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and another mayor announcement that I have is just to remind folks that this coming Saturday, from 4:00 to 11:55 p.m., that's a strange time, Wiat days will be happening, and that's happening out at Table Bluff. If you want more information, you can look it up, or you can text me, either way. And that will move us to presentations. So we have a presentation, City of Arcata Residential Rental Inspection Program, with Arcata Building Official Joe Bishop. Welcome.
Did I do it right? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Green light, go. Clicker to my left, thank you. Hi, how are you all doing today?
Welcome.
My name's Joe, as you mentioned, City of Arcata Building Official, and we are about two and a half, three years into our rental resident, just over two years, but from implementation, two and a half to three years into our residential rental inspection program. And I hear you all may have some questions, which is mainly what I'd like to get to, so I will move through this pretty quick. There's my contact information. I have a stack of cards maybe I'll provide that you can just hand out if you want, or, you know, I don't need them back, that's, you can do whatever you like with those. So yeah, please feel free, anybody can reach out to me with questions regarding that. Let's see, there we go. So I will introduce the program, why we're doing it, the implementation process, the program successes and lessons learned, and then open it up for questions. So, obviously, City of Arcata is college town. There's been an ongoing history of complaints from renters regarding quality of housing and fear of losing their houses, you know, rental, you know, high demand for housing equals high prices, and little to no maintenance. It's, if you're a property owner, it is a business, right? So obviously, you want to spend as little as possible and make as much as possible, which we understand. But unfortunately, if a tenant is afraid of getting kicked out for complaining, they're less likely to complain. So a rental inspection program takes the onerous off of the tenant, makes the program more equitable to all tenants. So it was a city council goal. Basically, the previous building official before myself kind of borrowed from other cities, just copied and pasted some language from other cities and put a program together. Once it was presented, many years ago, I think four, maybe four and a half years ago, the first presentation, surprisingly, large amount of pushback from property owners, property managers. The response was, we created working groups, we got people together, said, hey, what are your complaints? What are your concerns? And essentially, the main things that we did there, reduced the fees to basically nothing. I mean, we saw other cities are charging up to $200 annual fee and $200 to $300 per inspection. We're charging $20 a year annual fee and $75 for the inspection every three years. So really, it's pretty hard to say that we're doing it for the money, because we're definitely not. And then we really stayed focused on life safety, right? So instead of a four or five-page checklist, we broke it down to a one-page front-only checklist. And then we created exemptions necessary. And the main exemption, the biggest pushback I would say was from owners and managers of multifamily housing. And they're saying, hey, I'm already paying all this money for a state-mandated fire inspection. Why do I have to get this inspection too? And unfortunately, you know, we would like to get that involved somehow in that, in our program. Right now, that is one of the exemptions. If your property is already receiving an inspection from a state agency, that is one of the exemptions. So that helped a lot. Basically, that knocked about 90% of the complaints and pushback out of the way. So yeah, we, you know, created the record type process. We did a lot of outreach, we did a lot of PR training, you know, kind of figured our whole thing out. A big question mark, you, if you guys implement a program like this, is, is this run through the code enforcement department as part of their department? Or is it run through a building department or housing and community development? And if you do have fails, how do they go, are they still maintained in that same department? Or do they get kicked over to code enforcement? For me, it's easy. I also run code enforcement, so it was kind of a no-brainer for me. And then, you know, you got to keep your reporting and record-keeping straight. Most common violations, missing smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, ungrounded electrical. I put a lot of asterisks there because having a system that was built at a time where it was not required to be grounded is not a violation. But a very easy DIY homeowner thing to do is go to the hardware store, buy a three-prong outlet, and install it on your two-wire system, and that is a violation. But it's also an easy fix, you just replace that with a GFCI. Unsafe stairs and decks comes up quite a bit, non-op windows. Windows are required in bedrooms for egress, but they're also required for ventilation, you know, people need fresh air. And then the address, like, police or fire or an ambulance, they need to know where you're at if somebody calls an ambulance. So, pretty easy fixes overall. We've had over 90% compliance so far. Obviously, that last 10%, we're really looking to get in. We, this July 1st was the start of our third official year. This fiscal year is the time, the last frame window for people to get their inspections. So we're trying to get that last 10% in. Most violations mine are easily corrected. Yeah, like I said, the tenants are not required to complain in order to see the necessary minimum life safety improvements. Don't let the process take too long if you're going to do a program. My advice, just one of the lessons I learned, is get, just get your program on the books, get it, all the complaints addressed, and get it pass or fail. Don't let it take four or five years, if you can. Clear and concise guidelines, and hear the feedback and respond. You know, this is, that's the way our government works. We're here for the people, so hear the people's complaints, because the program exists for valid reasons, but the complaints are valid too. So, that's me. Questions, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Molton?
Hi, thank you for that. How informative. I feel like I missed a piece of information. How is the process initiated?
The city council goal was what initiated the building department to create and present a program. And through the attempt to adopt this program, the community pushback is what kind of stalled it and derailed it, and took many years of revamping it, yes.
I mean, what triggers a property being inspected?
Yeah, thank you. A single-family that is essentially not owner-occupied, so it's a rental. So if you're renting it out, you need to get this inspection.
So how does the city know that?
Yeah, that was a really challenging process. It started with lots of mailers, lots of advertisements, lots of PR, and also vacant property owner searches. So you identify properties that are owned by somebody who doesn't live there, doesn't get their mail there, and that's through the assessor's office.
Okay, so you're making your own list rather than the tenants complaining or bringing it to anyone's attention?
Right.
And that mitigates the possibility of retaliation?
Ideally, yes.
Ideally. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Castellano? Great. I'll ask a few, and then let other folks have a chance to ask. I'm curious about the cost of the program, given the, you know, relatively low fees associated with it. How many staff member do you have, members do you have working on it? Does it pay for itself? What have been the challenges with implementation from a staff level?
Yeah, so my department is three full-time and a couple of part-time, and the administrative specialist helps out as well. I'd say some of us have more to do with it than others. Obviously, I'm overseeing it all, but I'm not doing a lot of the inspections personally. And I'm mostly there to make determinations, answer questions. So really, my two full-time staff, my inspector and my code compliance permit tech are the main. But they also are, you know, obviously, processing building permits and all that. So, you know, it's probably less than one full-time equivalent between the three of us. But obviously, there's big waves, there's times where that's our entire focus. We're not doing anything else but that. And then, of course, other work falls behind for a little bit. As far as cost, you know, we basically kind of estimated the number of properties, and we did a bunch of math to figure out, like, what's the bare minimum, so that we're hopefully not losing money. And that's where we came up with the $20 annual fee, and then the $75 inspection fee, which if you divide up over three years, so it's basically $45 a year per property, you know, times the number of properties, divided by, you know, all that math is how we got to that number. Obviously, we're checking on that every year. It's hard to say, because we haven't got all of the properties inspected. Some of the properties need a little more hand-holding, takes more time, some are just right on the ball. I would say, just back-of-the-napkin math, we're barely going to break even. If anything, we might be a little bit in the shy, and so council may ask us to raise the fees in a couple of years.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you for this presentation. You had said that you'd gotten it down to one page, and that's pretty impressive, 29-point inspection, you know, exterior, interior. You just talked about staff, and so I'm curious about, how long does an inspection typically take? How many do you see within a month, on average?
Yeah.
If you know that off the top of your head.
Yeah, thank you. We schedule the time slot for a half hour, but that does include anywhere from five to 10 minutes drive time on either end of that. Some inspections take longer, same with building inspections, some take less amount of time. They just go on a regular building inspection calendar. So sometimes a rental inspection takes a little longer. The next, the electric service upgrade that's coming up after that is pushed back a few minutes. We get phone numbers, we text, we try to handle it. But generally, 20 minutes is a average inspection time. When we first got the program started, there was a lot of people who were, definitely wanted to show how good their properties are. And so, in the first year, we're probably doing anywhere from two to three inspections a day, three to four days a week. It's tapered off. The last six months to a year, we're seeing maybe one a week. I, and we're about to send out a bunch of letters and phone calls and emails, saying, hey, everybody, it's your last year to get this done. So we expect to see that uptick, and there's probably going to be a mad dash at the very end. That last month of compliance is probably going to be everybody trying to get it in all at once.
Okay, and I'm curious, just if you can maybe speculate, how many rental units this applies to within the city limits of Arcata?
Yeah, 2130, 2140, somewhere around there, just over 2,000.
And I know you touched on the fact that, you know, owner-occupied are exempt from this, which makes sense. Yeah, well, yeah, that's, that's, that's one of a few. And so I, does this apply to ADUs then, on owner property? I don't know how to phrase that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, essentially, an ADU is nothing more than a glorified bedroom in a house, so they would qualify for that exemption. However, unfortunately, there are a lot of people who built ADUs and then moved out of the main house, and so they're no longer owner-occupied. That's a tough one to catch, and that's a lot, that's a big question, you know, I put that question mark of code enforcement question mark. And as far as lessons learned, I think that's something you'll definitely want to know ahead of time, is how, how many of these are, do you want to really get into the weeds on? You know, if you identify a property that's not in compliance for some other thing, that's a great example. ADUs are supposed to be owner-occupied, the main, the original house is supposed to be owner-occupied, and that doesn't happen very much. Do you want to get into that? Do you want to get into code enforcement for every single little thing? Or do you really want to stay focused on the life safety, which is, was one of our selling points, is sticking to?
Right, so it sounds like there's some nuance to it, and that's, that's good to know. And just like you'd said, life and safety, and so assuming then, before this program started, this would be something that a tenant would have to resolve with the, with the owner or the renter, potentially through litigation if it couldn't be resolved. And so I'm curious then, how many complaints have you seen since, since this program has started? Has there been a drop-off of complaints that, anything like that?
Oh, yeah, I'd say we would, we, if you look back to before the rental inspection program, we did receive and respond to a lot of complaints about substandard housing. And I would say the, the last two, two and a half years of inspections have really tapered that off. We don't get nearly the level of complaints we used to get. It used to be average of at least two or three significant complaints a week. We're getting maybe two or three a month now.
Okay. And then, my last question is, I, I'd seen in the, in the ordinance that there's a self-certification program. Can you, can you walk me through that, how that might work?
Yeah, that's.
Or how that does work?
Yeah, that's, that's the goal. Essentially, we want all of the properties to get into the self-certification program. And essentially, what you, what the owner gains or gets out of that is, they don't have to pay for the annual inspection anymore. And the annual inspection becomes essentially that, or they're, sorry, the every-three-year inspection. You're paying the annual fee, if you're in the regular program, then every three years, you also have to pay for an, for a three, tri-annual inspection. If you get into the self-certification, that's the carrot we're dangling out there, is we're saying, okay, look, your inspection will be free, essentially. You pay that annual fee, that kind of builds up this bank theoretically. It was kind of a carrot. It's, it was a way to appease to the people who are saying, but I'm a good property owner, I'm a good manager, why, what, why should I suffer? So we say, hey, well, there's this self-certification program. We have of the, whatever, 19, just over 1,900 registered and compliant properties, or maybe it's closer to 2,000 now, roughly 200 or just over 200 are eligible for the self-certification. So that's what we're working on right now, is getting those people, say, hey, come on over, the grass is green here. And essentially, you know, I would like to see, you know, 90%, 95% self-certification. Honestly, I don't think that that's really going to happen. I think that most people are going to say, you know what, I'm going to make you do the work, you do the, so we'll do the work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Thank you. Does Arcata have any kind of business licensure cost for landlords?
For short-stay vacation rentals, those people should have a business license. I don't believe that we have any.
Not for general landlords?
Yeah, for general rentals, no. I'd have to double-check that, and I will, if you want to send me an email to double-check that for you.
Okay, yeah, I'll grab a card. And then, can buyers or sellers use recent inspection reports in lieu?
Yeah, so part of our ordinance is that if the property sells, the new buyer, the new owner is supposed to re-enroll. But if they had an inspection within that period, it's still a valid inspection.
Yeah, is there, like, did you guys set, like, a certain period of time, like, it has to be within, like, three months or six months or whatever? No? And then, how long, it's good for three years?
Yeah, inspection is within a three-year period, so.
Yeah.
You, you know, and we talked a lot about how to kind of incentivize. One of the things we try to get, if we can, we encourage people to get the inspections between tenants. So that's part of why we left a lot of flexibility. So if a landlord has somebody move out, hey, they're going to be in there cleaning up, they're going to show us how nice the property is. That's, that's your golden ticket, get in there. So we could see, you know, an inspection for this three-year period towards the end of it, and then a year, another, within eight months, have another inspection that's good for the next three-year period.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bauer?
This isn't a question for you, Joe, it's actually for Miles. How many complaints do we get, you think? I know Riley's here, but.
Yeah, that would definitely be a question for either Miranda or for key building official Riley.
So, Matt Morgan is the one that would really know. But I can say, just from hearing stuff down the hall, kind of offhand, I'd say there's probably a handful a month, it just, it goes in waves. After we have storms and stuff, we'll see an uptick. And then, just out of the blue, sometimes we'll, you know, we'll just get hammered and get a bunch in a month. But I'd say, average, we're looking at, like, five to 10 a month. And usually, most of the time, it comes up in the context of landlord-tenant disputes, where we find. So that's kind of the pattern that has emerged with our department.
So it's not a significant, I mean, it sounds like Arcata had some real issues way back when.
We do have some significant stuff come up from time to time, but most of the time, it's not. It's, it's usually small stuff that are landlord-tenant kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano? I'm curious if there have been, to me, there's, there's sort of two components of this program. There's the, like, registration, and then there's the inspections. And both have different benefits.
Yes.
Have there been any benefits to having basically a, you know, kind of an archive of everyone who is a property owner, who's renting their property, you know, in terms of needing to contact them, or, or reaching out in some way?
It does help to have it in a easily accessible place to me, but I could get all that information already anyways.
Okay.
So it, it's nice to have another database, but so far, we haven't really seen that. We don't have other departments coming and asking us about that.
Okay. And part of that, just for the background of that, there's things, you know, like, Community Opportunity to Purchase Acts, or things like that, that were, you know, were they enacted? They could make use of a program like that in terms of creating, like, local opportunities for property owners who are in the rental business to purchase rentals before they went to, like, out-of-area contractors or something like that. And then, have you all considered, like, also, like, a vacancy registration or anything like that?
Yeah, well, that is actually one of the, the problems that we've run across, is there are, there have been some identified vacant properties. And it kind of does fall in this little bit of a gray area, because it's not owner-occupied, but it's also not a rental. And there's a lot of little nuances. You know, it's, my, my daughter lives there. I live in New Mexico, but my daughter lives in the house, but she doesn't pay rent. So is that a rental? Well, they're not technically paying rent, but they are receiving value. So defining stuff like that is important. People will find any possible loophole they can. So there was probably a good six months or eight months of just arguing with people who didn't want to register for the program. But we got through it.
You know, someone who does building inspections, could you see there being a benefit to having, you know, like, if, if you could expand the program, would you consider also registering vacancies?
Yeah, absolutely. That would be a great thing to build into the program. Yeah, absolutely. That would be a great thing to build into the program from the beginning. Um, it's certainly been talked about. There's the, I know the city council, I don't know if any action is going, has happened or is going to happen. I haven't heard anything recently, but there was conversations about a vacancy tax. Um, I think that's something that's usually applied more to commercial buildings. Um, it helps keep the stock and quality of buildings up. You know, it de-incentivizes just letting a property sit and go to waste. Um, I, so I don't think we want a vacancy tax, but I think it would be good to somehow include vacant properties in some kind of inspection program, maybe a different program. Um, yeah.
Thanks. Anything further? Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Presentation.
Please reach out anytime. Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, this moves us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Time allotment for public comment on non-agenda items, a maximum of thirty minutes shall be allotted to receiving public comments at the initial public comment period. If necessary, an additional period shall be allotted to public comments after city managers' reports, but only if the first thirty minute public comment period was not sufficient to allow all those who wish to speak to do so. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. At the time an item is considered, the mayor will ask those attending to the meeting in person to line up on both sides of the council chamber or raise their hands, and for remote participants to use star nine on the telephone uh, or the raise hand function in Zoom. If they wish to address the city council, the maximum amount of time for each person to speak and the total amount of time allotted for each item will be determined based on the number of people indicating an interest in speaking and the amount of business to be conducted on the agenda. In certain circumstances and when necessary, to ensure a full opportunity for public input, the mayor may adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and or the time allotted for each speaker. So do we have anyone here that wants to speak in public comment?
Yep, yep, yep.
Come on up. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you. My name, my name is, is this on?
Mm-hmm.
My name is Randy Fleek.
Is it on?
And I've lived in this town since fifty-three, okay? And I gotta tell you, I'm gonna start off by saying thank you for your efforts to, uh, that you're putting forth. But you guys are getting it really wrong, and you're messing up a wonderful little town. This used to be a great place, but it's not anymore. And it says it is a direct poli- policy, it is a direct result of you guys is making the policies. Think about this, you have a responsibility to the community. Please make, make the right decisions. This, this business of the homelessness and the free needles for addicts? Uh-huh, I mean, this doesn't do our community any good. It might do the homeless and addicts wonderful, but no, no, no. But that's not why I'm here. Right now, tonight, I'm here because I'm tired of seeing these things getting built in the middle of the road. The concrete and brick, little deaky deck things that are going on the sidewalk and the extend the crosswalks. But in your, coming in from the south in front of Kmart now, you guys have erected its concrete with bricks, and it's really purty. But it's in the middle of the road, guys. Not the middle, but it's off to the side. And it's serious. I mean, this is causing, gonna cause somebody to get really hurt. The other night, I'm following a tractor trailer into Eureka. We're both in the, in the right lane, and this tractor trailer apparently didn't see this concrete and brick thing you've got going. And he made an abrupt, an abrupt to miss, turn to miss it. Well, there's a trailer house with a, I don't know, SUV pulling in. And and when, when he, when he went over, the trailer house went over. The trailer house did not go into oncoming traffic, and there wasn't much traffic at the time. But he took the turn lane. He was in the turn lane. And and he could have easily gone in, gone into oncoming traffic. These things have gotta stop. Whose brilliant idea was it to put this stuff in the road anyway? I, I mean, did, did you get a consensus? Who, who thought of this? How come? Why? It's just something for my wife to hit, and that's serious. Yeah, yeah, I know it's funny, but not to her because she is not a great driver. And you put, I mean, the road should consist of from gutter to gutter, not, oh, well, let's put tree, let's put tree decorations here and and, uh, oh, I got half a minute left. My, my, my. Well, you guys make some right decisions for our community for a change. I mean, if if you wanna spend money, and obviously you've got money to spend because these brick and concrete things are going up, don't, 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 don't do that anymore. I mean, find something else to spend money on. But this business of, you're, you're messing up a good community, and I hope.
Thanks for being here, Randy. Your time's up.
Have a better day.
Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to speak during public comment? No, seeing no one. Do you see anybody on Zoom, Shannon? Jay Doe? You have to unmute yourself?
Hi, um, I'm here to comment again because your head of IT used city hardware while on remote duty to covertly film me in intimate situations. The city clerk wrote, what he did, quote, was inexcusable. Ask me for his name. When I discovered this footage existed and was uploaded to Google, he had no remorse, simply telling me he, quote, can't lose any footage of Willie. After bargaining just to let me crop my face out, I discovered he had done it again and again, as if he thought he found some genius loophole in my consent. EPD advised me against exposing myself by handing over his identifiable videos of me, instead advising on May twenty-seventh that if I withdraw, the city would be able to act on his admission and police findings that he was creating and distributing porn on city hardware, including depictions of me. Remembering the city clerk's promises, I withdrew, and immediately you returned him from admin leave back to council chamber duty here on camera. Upon receipt of the video metadata linked to your Samsung Galaxy, you proudly told me no media exists, as if his success at concealing a dozen policy violations is commendable. Like, we failed to find what EPD found. Look how good he is at hiding things from us using the absolute power we trusted him with. Whenever I asked why he was working on and off through vacations, weekends, nights, he told me only he knows how to manage the city's digital infrastructure he had redesigned and automated for you. That was some clever engineering, but he made the mistake of pulling this on someone older than his proud, barely legal preferred target demographic. Because when I was nineteen and another older man decided to film and publish explicit videos of me, like most at that age, I had no autonomy to effectively advocate for myself. But this time, I am old, shameless, and unable to comprehend this municipality's attempts to normalize this violation, affirming what so many see as not a big deal, unable to fathom living in a body that is sexualized and objectified by default without the power they hold. I couldn't live knowing he'll do this again to someone who doesn't know their rights. City clerk told me she wanted, quote, to make sure this does not happen to someone else. But what have you done besides grant him full immunity to do it again? If he can preserve extensive video evidence using your hardware with his body and frame and my evident lack of awareness, and not even his police submission is enough to act on, what on earth is? While he still appears from the booth behind the dais, I will keep asking, how did you excuse the supposed inexcusable use of your hardware? Your IT officer, Derek Howard, admitted to, why did you abdicate his right to due process, forcing me to testify for the public record here?
Amy?
Hi, um, I, sorry, just thrown by that last speaker. Um, I'm here to speak in gratitude to, um, Leslie for bringing the Arcata presentation to the chambers. Um, I'm part of the Humboldt Tenants Union, and we are, um, trying to, um, connect renters, um, throughout Eureka, throughout the county, really, um, to resources that they can use to protect their right. And, um, I think a big thing that the present presenter pointed out was the reason that this is so helpful is the onus is currently on renters to tattle on their landlords. Um, a lot of people are already in precarious living situations. It's really hard to find a rental in Humboldt, as many can attest to. Uh, if you speak, if you tell your landlord that, hey, these things really should be fixed, this is unsafe, then, um, uh, it's very convenient for them to say, oh, we actually can't renew your lease because we need to fix all these things you brought to our attention. So having a, a policy that protects tenants as much as possible is, um, really helpful. And it was really great to learn about what Arcata is doing, and it would be really cool if Eureka could, um, learn from some of their hard, hard fought lessons and help support tenants in, in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else on Zoom. Okay, with that, we will close the public comment and move on to council reports. And we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Conchares Deloche.
Hi, um, I've been, I was out of town, uh, a lot, but I did, um, well, out of town, uh, did Board of Supervisors and the City Council two by two. Um, and, um, uh, also, when I got back, attended Friday Night Market, which was really nice. I haven't gotten to go very much this summer, and then, uh, did ethics training, so it's my tiny little report.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, let's see, I had the Humboldt Bay Fire, um, JPA meeting. Um, attended Friday Night Market as well, which was always a good time. Caught some of the marathon, just a little, little piece of it, but I didn't get, I didn't run in it, I just watched. I attended, uh, College of the Redwoods fundraiser. Um, it was really impressive turnout. Uh, community came out and it gave a lot of money to, um, programs for CR, which I thought was great. And, um, I do have an upcoming, or we all do, we have the Redwood Empire Division of Cal Cities. Uh, we have a local meeting here, so I'm looking forward to seeing all of us and, um, our, our fellow cities in, in the North Coast region of California. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It's been pretty quiet on, on my end the past few weeks. I've been in and out of town for work, and so I've been able, unable to attend things like, uh, Arts Alive and the Friday Night Markets, but barring any unusual circumstances, I should be back Wednesday evening or Thursday. And so I'll be able to at least take part in some of those, uh, some of those things, the farmer's market and such. Um, but but other than that, the, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Commerce, uh, meeting, our two by two has been rescheduled. Our two by two with Eureka City Schools is planned for next month. And so really, it's, uh, just some community updates. Central del Pueblo is hosting a solidarity and sanctuary day, uh, this Saturday, uh, the twenty-third, with a procession from Eureka starting at Target to their Sanctuary Garden in Arcata, uh, going along the Bay Trail. And and then I know the, uh, the group that's been sponsoring a lot of the resistance rallies out in front of the courthouse have a Defend Democracy Fair that they're planning for September fourteenth. Um, and they've, they're putting together a booth. I'm sure they've reached out to some of the other folks here on council uh, for a meet your council members booth. And and then I know myself and, uh, one of my Arcata colleagues have been approved for the Naleo Policy Conference, Naleo being the National Association for Latino Elected and Appointed Officials. Uh, and it's a conference regarding critical infrastructure, uh, which they've billed as Building Resiliency Today for Tomorrow's Hazards. So that'll be next month. A lot of action for me next month, it seems.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do have some travel to report. Uh, apologize for being absent at the last meeting. I was, uh, had just returned from Komisu, Japan, as you will know. Um, while I was physically in the state, I, uh, the time when I normally do my actual work was when was, when we were flying to the other side of the globe and back. Um, the, uh, the city of Komisu, Eureka's sister city, um, was very kind and generous enough to invite Mayor Bregal and a delegation to come celebrate their twentieth anniversary of becoming a city. And I was lucky enough to be a part of that delegation. Um, we traveled with the head of the Komisu project here, uh, Jay Tillman, who's gonna be making a more official presentation, but I just wanted to touch on a few highlights. Um, we went to Komisu and the Ibaraki Prefecture, uh, met by our hosts, Mush and Toyoda-san, who stayed with us the whole time, uh, both thankfully speaking English to us, uh, so we could get along. Uh, along with some members of KIFA, the Komisu International Friendship, Friendship Association, which is a group of locals that helps to host, um, foreigners, whether it's people who are traveling there, people who are teaching or students, um, they just kind of help, um, foreigners get along well in Komisu. And they kind of remind me of the Old Town Stewards. They're just there to be like friendly local ambassadors and show you where the good shabu-shabu restaurants are. Um, Mayor Ashida and the whole staff of City Hall gave us an incredible greeting and turnout with the whole staff coming out into the hallways to, to clap, uh, and to, um, give us gifts and just be generally incredibly welcoming. We planted a tree in a park. We went to the Ikisu Shrine, which is in Komisu, um, saw their massive wind farm, which is all right along their dune line at the beach. Um, and, uh, it was really actually very beautiful. The, there was nobody swimming, although it was incredibly hot because there was both a tsunami warning and a, um, a typhoon happening while we were there. So it was rainy and and very windy, and the surf was, um, way up. But it was gorgeous beaches, beautiful, um, beautiful windmills. We went to the, uh, Tanabata Festival, which is a great big street festival with teenagers and beer and bounce houses. And we got to participate in a, in a ceremony called, uh, Makoshi, where they take a miniature version of the Shinto Shrine and then like dance around with it. It's hard to describe. I say a mini version of the shrine. It's the size of a car. Um, we were carrying it while getting complicated instructions on how to do that in Japanese, which was, um, and we went to, um, the Katori Jinju Shrine, which is just outside of, um, just outside of Tokyo. Uh, the Komisu is considered very rural, even though it's a ninety thousand person city, and it's like a half hour drive from Tokyo, one of the biggest cities in the world. But because it's not on the train line, it's considered very rural. And I thought that was really interesting because public transportation is so important in Japan that simply not having a train stop means you're in the middle of nowhere. Um, not the middle of nowhere, very rural. Um, just wanted to, to sing the praises of our hosts. They were so incredibly hospitable and welcoming and accommodating, and every moment was, um, planned and delightful. And I, uh, hope I, it was a once in a lifetime thing. I hope I get to go back at some point. Um, but I'll understand if I don't, and I'll be grateful for this experience. Um, and I look forward to when, uh, Jay can bring, um, the presentation and so, show y'all some of the wonderful pictures and the places that we got to stay and the, the people we got to meet. Um, after returning, uh, from our two day trip, jam packed, um, attended the opening, the grand reopening of Highland Park there in the second ward, and it looks so beautiful. Uh, every, there's like new play fixtures and a brand new snack shack with public restrooms that are actually open, repaved all the courts, and there are pickleballers out there morning, noon, and night. You can just constantly hear them, like, all day long. Um, but it's wonderful having like people in the park all the time. Um, you know, to go out, I've met so many more neighbors, um, just out there with my son on his scooter to meet more people in my neighborhood than I did even knocking on doors during the election. Uh, and I wanted to shout out to Humboldt Bay Fire for bringing their truck out, which made the party very grand, of course, and hum bubbles, is it hum bubbles? Um, for providing just bubbles, just so many bubbles. They volunteer, and what a great atmosphere. The pickleballers, Humboldt pickleballers, um, who are out there for the party, but for everything. And of course, to all the folks on the city staff who worked and persevered for years and years to get together what it took to make this park what it is today. Um, there's gonna be a lot of improvements at local parks. Uh, Dayas is going to be, uh, spectacular. Um, but it was, it's really nice just to have our little neighborhood park with a gorgeous facelift, and everybody's so grateful and out just using the park, and that's what it's about. Uh, the other thing I've done since the last meeting is attend the Humboldt Bay Fire Board Me- Meeting, speaking of firefighters. And I just wanted to note a couple of things. The chief, the fire chief gives us a report every time, and he always lists off all the hundreds of hours of training that our, our first responders are going through, just continual, just like ongoing training, just to get best practices and all the practice that they do. But on top of that, so much staff development is happening. Everybody on, everybody seems to be going for that next level, whether it's becoming a paramedic, or becoming an inspector, or becoming an engineer and being able to drive those million-dollar rides, those beautiful trucks. And I just really appreciate that, that the, the professional development from within is always a big focus of, of our great folks over there. And congrats to HBF for the, we got a FEMA grant to put turnout washers in all of the stations. And this sounds like a nuts and bolts kind of thing, but you can't just wash fire gear in a regular washing machine, and you can't really just hose it off. So the fact that we have these specialized washers to take care of the, to take care of the equipment in a way that prevents health hazards for the firefighters, that makes their equipment nicer and, and more pleasant, I'm sure, but most importantly, safer. And that is a grant from FEMA that turned, that paid for that one. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that Humboldt Bay Fire, and I believe the EPD will be participating in a ceremonial stair climb on 9/11 to honor the first responders who climbed to the top of those towers, trying to save all those people. And that is EPD as well, yeah, Chief? Thank you. And the Sheriff's Office. So our local, our local first responders will be participating in that, and that's at the Hilfiger Training Facility over on the Eureka Waterfront. The public is welcome to come out and to watch and to honor those who, who lost their lives and who risked their lives to, to save people on 9/11. And that'll be at 9:00 AM, obviously on September 11th. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moulton. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. I was excited about Councilmember Moulton and Mayor Bregal's trip to Japan, and then I got even more excited about the pickleball sound effect. That was, well, well done. Let's see, I attended the Harvard two-by-two meeting, where the topics at hand were dredging, wind, and coordination regarding the, our planning for the local coastal program update. Humboldt Asian and Pacific Islanders in Solidarity Oban Festival over at the Creamery District in Arcata. It was really just fun celebration, lots of traditional, traditional dances, drumming. I attended Oroborotopia, which is a three-day theater festival. Mornings on Main Street, Economic Vitality Meeting, coordinated with Alyssa Woods, where we were kind of talking about streetscape-level improvements. Friday Night Market. Oh, I did want to just, you know, a person from the public spoke earlier today about improvements along the 101 corridor, and I just wanted to make sure the public understood that, that we are also implementing those in the city of Eureka, those particular improvements are funded by Caltrans. So that's why you may not see them on our budget. And the cool thing about those improvements is that they make the streets safer, and a lot of them are really geared towards accessibility and improving accessibility. For sure, sometimes people have to change their driving habits, too. And so just inviting folks to, you know, slow down and take a little more time as we get familiar with those improvements. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. And so for my mayor's reports, I do have a few items. I did want to talk about the marathon, so I just wanted to just bragging rights for just one moment if I'm, if I may. So I ran the half, sub-10 miles the whole way, rocking it.
Sub-10 minute.
Sub-10 minute miles, that's right. So pretty proud of that. But to, just to let you know, we had 292 runners registered, 39 did the 5K, 144 did the half, and 65 did the marathon. There were 13 states outside of California that were represented. Colorado had the most, six, Illinois, five, Nevada, five, Oregon, five, two each from New York, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, Texas, maybe your relatives, and Florida, one each from Washington, Tennessee, Iowa, and Indiana. 10 of the 60 marathon finishers qualified for the 2026 Boston Marathon. Awesome. Hashtag goals. Local high school, local high schooler Ryder Bowman won the half marathon in a scorching time of 1:16:33. It's fast. The youngest finisher was four years old in the 5K. We had 270, right? 270-plus finishers in the half, a 70-year-old female and a 78-year-old male. Ghirardelli Associates project managers for the New Bay Trail were the title sponsors again this year. Eureka Main Street, thank you, continued its 10-year tradition of Finnish celebration sponsors. And then volunteers from a wide range of nonprofits and other groups stepped up to run the aid stations, traffic control, crucial support. So Redwood Coast Montessori, yay, yay. Humboldt Wild Swimmers, Eureka High Cross Country, Arcata Sunrise Rotary, Raccoon Run Club, Lost Coast Kennel Club, Sheriff's Search and Rescue Team, Kinetic Sculptures, Eureka Volunteer Patrol, Pivotal Connections, Finish Line, Arch, and Physical Therapy, Aid to Runners. They had a massage lady at the end, it was awesome. Ghirardelli Associates Krispy Kreme Donuts and Gatorade at their booth. So huge thanks, this is actually from the directors now, all this information. Huge thanks to the city of Eureka and staff for going above and beyond to keep runners safe and supporting our work behind the scenes. So thank you, everybody, for making that happen, our 10th annual. I just wanted to report a couple other things. I did go to the Highland Park ribbon cutting and played pickleball for the first time. You want to do the sound again? And it's always so fun to see our community out having fun together, because that's, it's just an awesome thing. I, last week, I went to the CIT International Conference down in Anaheim, and that was, I was able to go to that through the county. And that's where law enforcement and many probation, a lot of different organizations are trained for de-escalation skills. So that was really, is always an interesting thing. And I would be remiss if I did not mention Commander LaFrance, back there in the back, that our own, this is so proud moment, our own Commander Leonard LaFrance was honored to be the CIT Law Enforcement Executive of the Year, and that's with the International CIT. So congratulations to you. It's so great to see you appreciated in this way, because you really do a lot, and we appreciate you. Let's see. Oh, another, another thing about the CIT that I just wanted to bring up is that I talked to a lot of different law enforcement from across the nation, and many of them do use the Flock cameras and the LEED program, and they find great success with that. So I'm hopeful that someday, maybe not in the near-too future, that we can relook at that as a tool for our city. Some of the things that I learned about LEED were interesting. They didn't really prosecute a lot of misdemeanors, they used it as a kind of the carrot situation. So that was really enlightening and interesting. I did the ribbon cutting for the Eureka Heritage Society, the new, the Boon Fence, which is a restoration. The mansion used to be down at E and whatever it is, 6th, 7th. And so that fence is there on, at the Annie Bee there on E Street, kind of near the muni. And if you've never been over there, it's a great place to have lunch. They have a beautiful garden, lots of things. Shannon and I delivered steak dinners to the Coast Guard at Station Sector Bay and Coast Guard Sector Humboldt Bay, which is always a blessing to do that. Really appreciate them. And then, almost lastly, a lot going on, we had the first annual Exhibition Derby, Kinetic Obstacle Exhibition Derby down at the Ferndale Fairgrounds instead of the horse races. So there was a kinetic race, we did an obstacle course. I was on the UFO, you may see the UFO going around town, I piloted that machine. And we went through mud, and we went through puddles, and we went through hay bales and all kinds of things. But it was a great, great turnout. And you know, I bet you it was probably the most fun that that fair, that area had seen in a long time. Kinetics people certainly know how to bring the fun, and I really appreciate that. And then I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Castellano, who has been working with the tribe on the Salut-Loc tiles, or whatever that you call it. If you go down to Coast Guard Plaza, Councilmember Castellano dedicated those on Friday. They're beautiful. You can actually QR code the, the titles of the different animals and learn the Waiat language. So thank you so much for that, an incredible thing for our community. God, that's so much. And I'm done. So with that, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. And notice to the public, all matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the Consent Calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read, there will be no separate discussion for these items. And I know that F4 has been pulled, is there anything?
So F4 has been pulled, and if you want to deal with one through three?
That's what we're going to do first, yeah. So if we could get a motion to approve the remainder?
I move consent items F1, F2, and F3.
Second. Motion in a second, please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And so we'll bring forward F4, Municipal Auditorium West Wing Improvements, and I believe that's with City Attorney Black.
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I might. The, there were some negotiations over the terms of that contract right up until the last minute. My office has now reached agreement with the contractor consultant, and we haven't yet put that in writing, but I would request that you move to adopt item F4 with the condition that it not be signed until approved by the city attorney. And then I will, I will prepare the necessary language.
Do we have any questions for Attorney Black? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one? Do you see anybody on Zoom, Shannon?
I see no one on Zoom.
So we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote.
I move to declare ORW Architecture, the preferred architectural firm, to lead the design services for Municipal Auditorium West Wing Improvements 2025 Project, and award the Design Services Contract pending approval and signature by the City Attorney for bid number 2025-6 Municipal Auditorium West Wing Improvement 2025 Project to ORW Architecture, and approve up to $455,552 as a design services fee for the Municipal Auditorium West Wing Improvements 2025 Project. Does that work? Okay.
Perfect.
Second.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Oh, I have my hand up.
Councilmember Fernandez has his hand raised.
Oh, of course. Councilmember Fernandez?
With, with the, with the motion that was made, there's still the understanding that this would be after you review for approval, correct? City Attorney?
Absolutely correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. This moves us to ordinances and resolutions, accessory dwelling unit, and SB9 inland zoning code update with Director Kenyon. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All right, so this is an update to our inland zoning code that updates our accessory dwelling unit section of the code, our residential zoning district section, and our urban lot split subdivision section to bring them into alignment with current state law. And on July 9th, Planning Commission voted to recommend city council approval. On August 5th, city council held a public hearing and voted to introduce the ordinance. And today, there's a vote on adoption. So I have a motion when you're ready.
There's no questions from Councilmember Fernandez?
None.
I see no one on Zoom.
I'll make the motion. I move that the city, the city council waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 1049CS in ordinance of the city of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 155, the inland zoning code, subsection 155.204 Residential Zoning Districts, 155.316 Accessory Dwelling Units, and 155.332.040 Urban Lot Split Subdivision, consistent with current state law.
Second.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Are we at the vote?
We are.
Oh, sorry, I did not catch that.
Oh, that's, five yes votes, motion carries.
There might be a little bit of a delay on my end, I'm sorry. If anyone's speaking, I can't hear.
Mayor Bregal, was your microphone on?
Oh, my gosh, my microphone's not on, Mario, I'm so sorry.
Okay, good, it's, well, it's a technology, not a cognitive thing, I feel better, thank you.
You're welcome.
No, I have to.
Yeah, it's just frozen on that computer. Probably three seconds? Yeah, I don't know why it's zooming, it's hiding on that computer, but it's good now.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready to go.
Okay, so the first ordinance update that we visited last council meeting is the updating of the language in 150.105 to reflect the CBC instead of the UBC. There've been no changes to anything since the last meeting. And then there's a suggested motion down below.
Okay, are there any questions? You have questions? Okay. So seeing no one, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Great, so we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for a motion. Sure. Councilmember Castellano?
I move the city council waive full reading and read by title only and adopt bill number 1047-CS in ordinance of the city of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15,
amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 150, Section 150.105 to 121 pertaining to live-work occupancies.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second. If there are no further comments, please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Aye.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, next.
Okay. And the next ordinance update is to the abandoned shopping cart ordinance. There've been no changes since the last meeting. And the change was to allow us to charge the fees whether we dispose of the carts or we return them to the businesses from which they came. And then there's a suggested motion below.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No? Can you see Councilmember Fernandez? Does he have questions?
Go ahead, Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I, I know at the last council meeting, we had some drawn-out discussion about this particular item. And, and I know we moved it forward. And I since had the opportunity to follow up with a city attorney. And, and I'm hoping city attorney or, or city manager, if you could educate us any on, on whether or not we would be allowed to base the fine on a business's particular size as it, as it relates to this nuisance, or even to the point of, I think, Councilmember Contreras Deloche's point of potentially permitting X amount of carts as, as a cutoff before being considered a nuisance.
City Attorney Black?
Yes, Mayor and council members. So what we're, what we have done with this ordinance and will do going forward is to impose a fee. And a fee is a form of charge that is aimed to defray, offset, or, or pay for a cost incurred by the city. And due to how the law has evolved, really since the nineties, you're not allowed to use a fee to generate revenues above and beyond the actual cost. So what that means is you're not really in a position to single out one level of business and subsidize another level of business through differentiating on the basis of the size of the business. So, for example, a multi-billion dollar national corporation, the, the, the cost to recover their cart and return it to that business is, and I could be, this could be shown otherwise, but my belief is that the cost to recover and return that cart is going to be the same for a small business or a large business. And therefore, this could not be charged as a fee. The only other options would be to make it a tax. But then that has implications requiring vote, a vote of the people, you know, et cetera, in a whole different evolution of the law. And so I don't think you can base the fee upon the size of the business. I do believe that you could establish a base level. Let's say every business would not be charged until they have developed a record of a certain number of carts, a certain level of carts per week requiring city intervention. In other words, let's say, or make it a month, let's say five carts a month, no one would be charged, big or small. But above and beyond five carts a month, there would be a charge. And if you, if it turns out to be the case, under that neutral principle, that everyone is not going to be charged for their first five carts a month that are recovered and returned to them, it wouldn't, at that point, be discriminatory or wouldn't be a violation of the fee concept to then begin charging for everything above five carts a month. That's just an example. I, I do think that could be justified and defended legally.
Does that answer your question?
It does, and I appreciate that answer, thank you.
Okay, any further? Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, and thank you for the question and your response. I'm just, a little bit of follow-up on that. You know, we're, you know, to me, there would be an increase in staff time in terms of tracking that. So it would add really basic to the, basically to the level of work that staff is doing related to this program. Yeah. I'm, I'm seeing nods for folks on the, on the public.
Yes, it would.
And then, you know, and then we would be basically be spending taxpayer money to kind of supplement that staff time and supplement the return of the carts to these businesses. Because, you know, staff will still need to get paid and take the time to, to do that.
I think in order to do it appropriately, what we'd likely do is whatever that number may be is, the, the cost per instance after that would be that much more. If you see, get what I'm saying? If you have a, a company that has five and you gotta pick up five, and then you only charge them for the sixth one, I think you would kind of prorate it and make it so that those costs accrued for those first five are, are going to be factored into those ongoing fees.
I don't think you can do that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because you're, because then the fee that you're charging for the cart recovered is more than the cost to, to the city of recovering that cart. So the first, if you're going to use the first five principle, and it could be the first one or the first three, however many it is, that's going to be a general fund subsidy that supports the notion that the more conscientious and perhaps smaller vendors, the more conscientious they are, the less they're going to get charged. Because the first three not being charged to a business that only has four a month is less onerous than the business that has, you know, 25 a month, and they get charged for 21 or 20 of those.
Okay, makes sense, yeah. So then the subsidy coming from the general fund. So let's say those smaller people continue to do three a month and they never met that threshold. All of those would be covered through general fund subsidies and.
Thank you.
And the building fund, and I'm not trying to influence decision here, I just want to make clear, the building fund is an enterprise fund. The building fund up until the past three years was heavily subsidized by our general fund. And we spent a lot of time and effort trying to get the building fund, thanks to the efforts of our chief building official and staff, to where that fund is operating in the black currently.
Great, and so just to reiterate, so if we, you know, compromise that kind of smart budgeting, then we would potentially be having kind of taxpayers supplement neglectful businesses, maybe to put it in rough terms.
I would say the general fund would have to cover those costs, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. Would you, City Attorney Black, or whomever, remind me of the nature of the state law regarding shopping carts and the businesses' responsibility to secure them?
I'm not exactly sure of how that is worded, but perhaps Riley can help with that.
So the state law is a lesser standard than what our ordinance ended up becoming, but they are required to put things like wheel locks and try to keep them on premise. And the state law also has, I think, a three-day impound, which our ordinance, whenever that was developed, didn't have as a part of the process. But other than that, it's substantially the same as our ordinance. And then there's actually something working through the state at this point to do exactly what we've done with this ordinance. It's gone through the state senate, allowing return of the carts to the businesses instead of taking them to the dump in order to charge the, the associated fees.
Uh, thank you. I have one more. Just thinking about the notion of having either limits or grace based on a certain number of carts per time period made me think about how the carts are recovered. And it seems more like cleanups tend to happen geographically, like one part of town, then the next part, then the next part. Am I, am I right? So you would find a lot of shopping carts from a particular business when you were doing cleanups or when things were happening near that business? Or is it more spread out?
No, not necessarily. They're spread out all over. We find them in alleys. When code enforcement drives around, they'll encounter them on the side of the road in alleys. Sometimes it's with cleanups, their encampment stuff, or encampments that are cleaned up by the parks or the code enforcement staff or the harbor staff down by the Wharf finger. We just kind of, we, we come upon them all over the place.
So do you think the frequency of finding the carts reflects the volume that's out there?
Yeah, it's, we are constantly trying to keep them cleaned up. So, yeah, it's a, it's an everyday thing.
Uh, and one other question about the state law. What's the enforcement like on that? Is that, you know, like an inspection thing where they go in to make sure they have locks? Or is it an after-the-fact?
I'm, I'm not sure.
No, no, okay.
Yeah.
Just curious how that, how that actually gets enforced if we're overlapping. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Would it violate any kind of laws or rules if we imposed? So we have this, in the, in the ordinance, we have a list of things that we're kind of requesting that people do to sort of, or excuse me, that businesses do to sort of deter theft and abandonment of carts. Could we entertain possibly that when we recover carts that have wheel locks, which are easy to disarm or signage and that kind of thing, they've reasonably, those businesses, if they have ways to lock them up and they've done all those things and are still victims of theft, could we not charge for those then? Because they still went up and over and somebody still went up and over the precautions they've taken and stolen.
Yeah, I think you could do that if you want to write that into the ordinance.
And if that was written into the ordinance, once again, that, that, the cost recovery for doing that would have to come from the general fund.
And that's where it's coming from now?
No, now we find people.
Right, you're already finding people right now?
Well, we have it within our ordinance to find people. We typically.
Are we actually finding people? Because I feel like I've gotten a couple of answers on it.
At this moment in time, we are not, but we.
We had previously when this first had come up.
And so this ordinance is changing what then? Because I thought the change was that this is going to find them.
Well, we can find whether or not we dispose of the cart, which is the way.
Return it to them.
Or if we return it to the business, yeah.
I see. Thanks.
Any further questions? Seeing none, is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it over to Zoom. Do you have anybody?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so with that, we'll bring it back to council for a motion a second and then discussion. Councilmember Bauer?
I move the city council waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 1046 CS in ordinance of the city of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 13, Chapter 130, Section 130.30 pertaining to abandoned and derelict shopping carts.
Second. So we have a motion in a second. Are there any comments on this item? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I think, you know, you know, same concerns I had the last time, you know, when we first discussed it. I understand the staff time component and that kind of thing. Unfortunately, I think, yeah, when people are stealing from businesses, they're creating costs at both, well, they're creating costs at multiple ends for the business, who's just trying to do business, and then for whom, whatever staff is trying to pick things up and the cost to the city. So there's kind of this, you know, significant cost that's happening there. Also, it's very expensive for them to modify their carts. And I know, I've, I've reached out and talked to a few people. Guess I should have mentioned that in my council report. And they have told me that it's easy for signs to be scraped off. It's easy for them to be busted off, and they do. It's easy to disable the wheel locks and that kind of thing. And so I think, you know, the thing that I'm still bothered on is I think, you know, we have, we have a, a situation where we, somebody who's just doing business is being victimized, right? They're being victimized by shoplifters or being victimized by people who are stealing their carts. And then we're like, we're going to charge you a fee for that. And I think the impression from some of the people that I talk to is that it is another move and a series of moves by the city that is not friendly to business and does not understand the pressures that they're under or what's happening to them and that they are dealing with and being victimized by crime pretty continually and that that's really significantly affecting their bottom line. And I think it's a fair criticism. I know there's, you know, limited amounts of stuff that we can, as a council, do about some of these things. Obviously, there's kind of like these broader things kind of going on. But it does seem like we're penalizing businesses for something that they, assuming that they've made precautions, have nothing to do with. And my concern with this was, is it's one thing for, you know, a large big box store that doesn't care and is kind of riding this off and like, woo-hoo, the city can clean up after us. But why I was requesting potential modifications on this was so that we weren't dragnetting small local, like, local businesses where there's maybe just one or maybe two or three and they're, you know, they, they don't tend to be the issue that we're running into. And if, they're already reporting that they feel a lot of pressure right now in this economy. People are shopping less, they are purchasing less groceries, they're foregoing things. So I just, I think I'm cognizant of that. I don't want us to be making decisions. It, it is, it's a tough thing because, you know, this is something I never considered before it came in front of us, is who pays for things like stolen carts? And how, you know, it's just not something I had considered. I just still don't feel comfortable with us passing that cost along to those businesses, again, who are already dealing with these kind of pressures. So Leslie's rebut, I'm done.
So can I just ask a clarifying question then? So, so you think, I understand, I hear, I think I hear what you're saying about, you don't want to target business owners that are being stolen from. So do you feel like then, just to clarify this, that the general population should be paying for that? Out of the general fund, our taxpayers should be paying for that?
Um, I think that's a really good question. I think we already do in a lot of indirect ways and with the expansion of law enforcement and other things like that that we need to do because of the amount of issues that we're dealing with. And so, yeah, I guess in a lot of ways, I see this as kind of a roll-in. We, we are literally expanding different areas of law enforcement specifically because we have some areas of our population that are really struggling. And, I mean, one of them, like, the budget group, I, I can't even remember how much, 800% or something else last time. So I, I guess, yeah, in some ways, I'm kind of seeing that as, you know, we have some situations here that are law enforcement connected. And so, I mean, it's kind of left pocket, right pocket. It seems like it's still essentially, you know, I, yeah, that's, that's kind of my thought on it.
I, I just want to clarify that these do get treated as theft. They'll be treated as stolen property by EPD. The vast majority, I would say 90-something percent of the ones that get recovered are not EPD. They're recovered by code enforcement, harbor, parks, those facilities, streets, those type of divisions and departments in the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez? And then you girls, ladies.
Similar vein and concern is Councilmember Contreras Deloche, which if, if it were, or it possible to, to do as the city attorney had described in the sense of elevating that fee after the first three or five or what have you, or able to fine the larger offenders more for their complicity in it, I, I could find myself voting then in favor of this. But I find myself, for similar reasons, unable to, given that, again, understanding that this would, you know, with, without this, that this would come out of the general fund. But again, I believe the allegory, or at, at least what had been explained last time, is this isn't any dissimilar than if someone were to have had their car stolen and impounded. Well, eventually, if they're lucky. Well, eventually, if they're lucky enough to have found the perpetrator, but in order to get your car out of hock, you have to pay for that yourself. So I find that disingenuous, I find it inequitable to the smaller businesses that are already trying to do right by this, and I can't fathom why I would want to move forward with it.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
And then Moulton? Great. I am curious to hear Councilmember Moulton's thoughts. Just to say, if we do not pass this, there is an existing ordinance on the books that will still charge a fee to business owners, it just won't return the carts. So I just want to clarify that for, for the public and for other council members. This is not changing the fee, this is actually allowing us to return the carts to business owners. That being said, you know, there, there is a means by which council members can, you know, make a friendly amendment, amendment and/or a substitute motion regarding this if they want, but with nothing else being said, we'll just maintain the fees for everyone and not return the carts.
Councilmember Moulton, thank you.
Thank you for reiterating the actual question on the table rather than the ordinance itself. It's this additional, essentially, service so we can save businesses money by giving them their carts back. But my question was about wheel locks and other security measures that are required by law. Do you see a trend in carts that you find? Or do they have wheel locks on them that have been disabled? Or do you find more that are not protected in any way?
Yeah, we find ones that have wheel locks and then also ones that have been tampered with. It's kind of a mixed bag, but definitely both.
So, I'm sorry, I couldn't, is your mic on?
It is. There's an alarm or something going off too. There's, we find both.
You find both, okay.
Yeah, with the wheel locks and that have been either disabled or wheels replaced, there's all sorts of different stuff that are done.
Do you, could you draw any conclusion about a strategy for keeping carts that seems to work? Are there businesses, without naming names, of course, that, like, you just never see their carts out?
The majority of businesses, we don't see their carts out. There are a few businesses that we see the vast majority of carts from.
And are these businesses that just have a lot of carts?
Yes, they, they have a lot of carts.
Clearly, so they're not missing them. Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I think, you know, recapping the meeting that we were in before, the reason why I'm making an issue out of this, even though I know that that's the only thing that changed, are those 12 words or 13 words, whatever it is that says we can return them, it was through that last meeting where we were questioning that, that I found out we had not been charging for the carts. And so my concern about moving this forward the way that it is, is that there is going to be that emphasis on now we're going to charge for those carts. And so even though it's not an official change, it's kind of an ipso facto change in my mind. And so that, you know, still essentially kind of rubber stamps that. And I thought, well, maybe then we have a discussion about it so we don't gather, you know, everyone.
Councilmember Fernandez? And then Castellano?
Thank you, thank you. And while I understand the process for offering, offering amendments, there isn't one that's, that's feasible at this point, given some of the interpretations from both the city manager and the city attorney.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, I, I do continue to support this change in getting shopping carts back to the businesses versus us also having to pay an additional fee of, you know, not only the staff time, but the cost of disposal of the carts is also pretty significant for the city. And for that reason, I do think that it's much better to return the carts and, you know, also just not be throwing away good shopping carts, perfectly good shopping carts. I also, you know, just think that the general fund is not infinite and, you know, I care a lot about the city services that we provide. And so, you know, I would like for us to continue to be able to offer, you know, substantial services to our communities. And there's, there are limits on staff time. And so I do think that, you know, that these fees make sense to charge, especially because from everything I hear, it's really a few very negligent businesses that are causing the problems. And so I don't think it's, it's fair to the public to, to pay for that.
Anything further? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I think, can you tell me, I don't recall, I don't recall that we had much of any numbers actually at the last meeting, and I think that was part of what's tripping me up, is that everything was a little vague. Can you tell me what the amount of money is that we have been spending as a city?
I couldn't, I mean, we have, in fact, we factored in for the fee as far as what it costs for staff time to take them either to the dump or take them back to the thing, and that's what that fee is based on. If we look on past practices and you look into storage fees and you look into tipping fees and all of those things, staff could bring that number back to you. But I don't think we could charge for the, oh, there's Kristen.
I was just going to say, part of what we want to do is start this record-keeping of all of the carts and who they're retrieved by, when. And then I think that will give you way more information about whose carts they are and how many they are, that would, in the future, if we could come back and report once we start doing that, I think that would inform any sort of update around the fee.
Well, I think that's, that's the thing I'm still having trouble with, right? Because when I asked, like, thank you, Kristen, or Director Kenyon, you know, I asked, well, how many do we have, you know, month or, you know, year and I, the response was, a lot. And I have no concept of that. Is that 10 a week, 100 a month, 1,000?
Yeah, right now, we, we kind of pick them up more infrequently than we would, just because they, they kind of end up right back in the same places. And we don't have, we haven't really shifted our focus toward grabbing as many as we can. If we wanted to grab as many as we could, I bet we could easily get 20 a day.
Okay, thank you. No, that's really helpful because I was like, I have no concept, what are we talking about? So why I'm asking this question though, is, you know, to Councilmember Castellano's point, is, you know, this idea that the cost has been so immense that it's going to impact other city services. And so I guess I'm trying to figure out, what has the cost to the city been? Because we haven't been charging fees. They have not been getting charged. So what have we been paying as a city to, to do this?
Well, I can't even speak to all of what other departments pick up, because right now, we don't have a centralized way to track stuff. That's part of what we're trying to do. The other departments may be dedicating a lot of time to this also. I can only speak to exactly what code enforcement has been grabbing.
And you're saying you guys could pick up 20-
Yeah.
-a day?
Definitely.
Are you picking up 20 a day?
No.
What do you think you're picking up in a day?
It depends on the, I, last Friday, I picked up three, myself, I picked up three.
Okay.
So I'm not, and we, we haven't been, we're waiting until we can implement this so we can kind of keep better track and try to forge things going forward. So once we get going, I, I can come back and report how it's going and let everybody know, but-
No.
Right now, we're just, we're just trying to get this off the ground and get it moving.
I really appreciate that. I think, you know, I am trying to gauge, and I don't think there's any way for me to do that, I've been trying to gauge what this big cost to the city would be if we don't start charging now since they haven't been charging. So that's what I was trying to figure out.
I do want to say that not charging has been more recently. When we first started this program, we were charging for all of them that we did.
Have you guys not been charging?
Not sure, not since code enforcement came over into development services.
So that's been a little bit over a year.
A little over a year, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, I'd love to get a report in six months and I'd like to call the question.
So the question's been called, please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Nay.
Three yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez, Councilmember Contreras Deloche, vote no, motion carries.
This moves us to future agenda items. Are there any? Okay, seeing none, we'll move over to city manager report, strategic visioning update.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council. So as everyone knows, our long-awaited strategic visioning is coming up on September 6th. It is going to be held at the Adorni Center. Oh, oh, excuse me, here, that's right, because, that's right. It'll be held here, it'll be open to the public. What staff has done prior to this, as everyone knows on council and staff, we have hired Karen Deemer, the former city manager for the City of Arcata, to coordinate this year's strategic visioning. So what we did is, management staff worked with her to set up a meeting with all of the appropriate staff that fall under the categories that council has developed for strategic visioning. So we've split it up into four categories. We have economic development and communications as one category, we have effective governance, then we have public health and safety, and then we have, I just lost one, community pride. And so we signed appropriate staff from each of the departments and held a preliminary kind of brainstorming over those areas and discussed with those staff about what they're currently working on, what they have coming up in the future. That is applicable to those general areas. And so we're gathering that information right now. We met on August 13th. We're combining all that information. Management staff will prioritize that and put it into a list for council's review. That'll come to you guys prior to September 6th. I'm hoping by next week that we'll have that to you, for you guys to review. That's just kind of a, a starting point for you guys to look at. And there'll be, it'll demonstrate what the format's going to be looking like and then what staff is currently working on. And then that'll give food for thought for September 16th, excuse me, September 6th, here at city council chambers. Public is welcome. And we will finalize the strategic visioning then and then come up with a document for staff to work from to achieve the strategic vision for council. So if there's any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. The time is now. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We appreciate you being here. We're adjourned.